All the committees, the Public Safety Committee to order please. Before we start this morning, I'll just get a good off subject real quick. On the reminder of the fairs this week, encourage everybody to go. The milking contest is on Wednesday with the opening ceremonies. All supervisors are invited to come and attempt milking. Mr. -- everybody will get a cow. Mr. Monte will have to use a cat. The other thing is new this year is your dunk your supervisor booth, which I sent out an email to everybody and gave some time so Thursday. I know a number of you came back, and so we'll be opening up Wednesday opportunity for you. I know that there are a few of you on the pinnacle list, so we won't be able to do it, and that's fine. But if you could get back to me, you know, if the time I sent out is good, or if you're, you know, if there's another reason that you're unable to get wet. So on that note, I'd like to -- we have a presentation this morning, and I'd like Mr. Giordano, if he could introduce, please.
Thank you, Sean. So my name is Joe Giordano. For anyone who doesn't know, and I am the town supervisor for Ticonderoga, newly elected this year. And as a newly elected official, they send you through lots of training. And that's good, because you have lots of questions. So in one of the training sessions that I had encountered back in January at the Association of Towns training, Jeffrey Scott, who's here today, was speaking about the Cornell Local Roads Program and one of the resources, many of the resources that they offer. But specifically, the presentation today that FYI have asked just to come before the board has to do with the Cornell Asset Management Program, which they'll be speaking about regarding your roads and your streets and how best to assess and track the conditions of those, of that asset. A few months back, Jim and Chris from the Highway Department had provided the supervisors, if you guys recall, this kind of colorful spreadsheet regarding the equipment that the county currently utilizes and our best practices, at least moving forward, with how to handle resource allocation in terms of retiring old equipment and bringing on new equipment. This is very much similar to that, very much an analogy to that. So Jeffrey Scott, he's the Technical Assistance Engineer with Cornell Local Roads Program, and he's going to give a brief overview of the program, and probably with specifics to the Cornell Asset Management Program as it relates to roads and streets. And through that program, the towns who decide to participate hire interns, or an intern, or in our case, two interns, to go through and work with the Highway Department to gather the information. Again, another packet of information that was provided earlier this year from our Highway Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent was a listing of all the road sections in everyone's town. So this actually was very helpful in terms of correlating with that Asset Management Program. And so the interns will be speaking to that as well. So without further ado, I'll let Jeff Scott begin the initial presentation, and then I'll follow by our interns, Sam Schelmanine and Colvin Chapman, to speak about how this program, how this Asset Management Program, assessment of roads and streets, was carried out throughout the past month and a half. So do you guys want to come up?
Thank you, Joe. As Joe said, my name is Jeff Scott from Cornell Local Roads. I'm the Technical Assistance Engineer at Cornell Local Roads Program. My job is essentially to go out and provide technical assistance for local municipalities throughout New York State. That includes villages, counties, towns, cities as well. So we work with all different municipalities. And the idea is that we can provide this training at an affordable cost. We're funded by the federal government, we're funded by the state DOT, and we're also supported by Cornell University as an extension program, similar to the Cornell Cooperative Extension, but we're focused more on roads itself. So I will get on with our program here. So we started off in, I'll just kind of go a brief view through what we've done. The Cornell Local Roads has actually been initially founded as a program in 1951, serving, as I said, all local municipalities throughout the state. This is 1602, I believe, it's down to 1599 due to consolidation of villages into towns. But we deal with everybody. We try to help everybody do whatever they can whenever they have a problem. We go anywhere from snow and ice to management, to pavement management, to asphalt paving principles, to all the little ins and outs that might go along with roads. Road safety fundamentals, we've got complete streets, we've got, let me see, asset asphalt management, pavement management itself, inside a variety of different programs that we offer. Again, the LTAP Center, our program started in 1951. It served as a model. The National Highway Institute and the Federal Highway Administration actually liked the program so much, they developed the national program, and it's called the Local Technical Assistance Program. Of this program, there's actually, does it keep up? There's actually 57 centers, I believe, 58 centers. One in every state, plus Puerto Rico, and then each of the tribal units. There's one in Michigan that covers the East Coast, and then there's six more that cover the western part of the United States. So some of the things we do, we provide a newsletter, we offer workshops for training, conferences, we put on two conferences during the year. We have a library, we have a website that you can go to to gather information. We do direct technical assistance, whether it's over the phone, through email, or give me a call, I can come out onsite and take a look at something and give you professional engineering advice. We don't do engineering, because we don't want to conflict with the local enterprises, engineering firms. But we can put you in the right path, so you actually know what the questions you're looking for, and you can ask the right questions when you try to solve your problems. And then we offer special events and programs. And that's kind of what we're talking about today, is the Asset Management Program we have. These are just some of our newsletters. I passed a few of them out earlier, or they were passed out. Again, they kind of give you an update on some of the things that are going on. We try to keep people up to date. They come out quarterly, once we put out four per the year. And then monthly, we put out a Road Chatter, which is kind of an update that comes out pretty regularly, goes directly to your email, and then it kind of informs you, keeps you up to date on any changes, any events, anything that might have happened. So it's just a good resource as far as end information. Some of the fall workshops, this year is kind of anomaly. We just finally got our contract approved. We've been running on an extended contract for the last three years. Finally, this year, the comptroller finally signed our contract. But we didn't know how much funds we have, so this is why we've got an edited version of workshops this fall. But we're looking to get back up. Typically, we run about 50 workshops around the state, as I mentioned, in a variety of different categories. These are the ones we're actually running this year. This is what we had available for funding. Locally, we've got Running Your Highway Department. That's geared more toward understanding how the Highway Department's running, how the budgets have developed, how planning goes, how to deal with your workers, what the ins and outs of the details as far as management goes with your Highway Department. And then Snow and Ice Control, again, there's a few local around here. That's always a popular one come fall. It allows you to calibrate your equipment, teaches you the different types of practices that are out there, how to try to be more efficient, how to plan your routes, how to look at your overall snow maintenance program to be cost-effective. And we do workshops by request as well. So if you can have, if you have 15 people, and it doesn't have to be one municipality, because a variety of municipalities put together, we could bring a workshop to you and do any of those courses that you might want. Anything less than 15 people in a class really isn't cost-effective for anybody. One of the things we offer in the spring, in June, is the Highway School. It's an opportunity for local Highway Superintendents to be educated. We have two and a half days of training that goes on on pretty much anything, from chips to invasive species to equipment operation, variety of different things. Typically, we have a demonstration onsite. This is one that was several years ago. They did a micro mill and then a thin overlay on it, just as demonstrations to see how the equipment works, some of the most more effective ways of making it happen. How to be, how to get the most for your money, again, is what we're kind of focusing on. We also hold a bridge conference in the fall, typically down in Syracuse. This year is going to be in October. There's a training session, October 25th, and then 26th and 27th are the actual conference itself. And these are PDH level, these are engineering level classes. So it's pretty good. It's kind of gives you a good run, understanding of bridges and practices that are going out there, who's involved in it. It's a good gathering of a lot of municipal engineers, private engineers, county engineers. It's a good gathering of knowledgeable people when it comes to bridges. And then our library, a variety of different things. We've got videos for loan, quite a few topics, quite a few videos that are in there. Some have been outdated. We're going through them, we're getting rid of them, we're trying to update them. We've got all the workshop manuals, anything that's available. You know, our library essentially is available to the municipalities at no charge. Again, we're covered by tax dollars. So anything we provide is pretty much to you for nothing. We've got guides, like you say, different types of guides. We've got a traffic sign pocket guide, essentially you can keep it right in your truck. It's focused on local roads, not the interstates, not the high road, not the major state roads, but it's those roads that are more to the local nature. So it's geared more toward that. You can actually keep it in your glove box. It's the MUTCD and handheld manual. And we also have smartphone apps. We're just getting into developing apps for smartphones. We've got one for invasive species. Most of the apps out there for invasive species are focused on the biological aspect of it. If you're a biological engineer, or you're out there with it, and you want to know what the genius of a plant is or something, that'll tell you. Ours is more focused at the highway people, and you're out in the field, what to do, what not to do, how to remove it. If it's, some of these invasive plants, if you pick them up and throw them somewhere else, they're just going to keep spreading. So it kind of gives you an idea what to do. It allows us to backtrack again toward a database. Once it's logged in where it is, you take a photograph of it, and it'll actually backtrack, and it'll keep, it'll log back directly into a state database. So that's one of the handy ones. We've also put together a work zone app. So if you got to do a work zone in the field, it's going to be quick. You're just going to set up, who's going to be on it. You can list all your equipment, all your manpower in there. You can do a quick work zone, so you're protected legally. It'll export directly into a Word file, and then you can print it out, so you've got a record in case any kind of incidents, any kind of accidents happen. You've got a record to protect yourself, that you did have a work zone plan in place. And then we've got a variety of different publications that others have provided for us that we also make available for. Our website, it's got a variety of different things on it. It's a lot of good information. It's got what we call quick answers, typically a lot of answers that we get from a lot of people around the state. We kind of gather them all together. You can do a query in the website and find out anything you might want. If you want to talk about crosswalks, you can plug that in. It'll bring up all the articles related to crosswalks. Then we have tech tips, so more technical education things that basically, if you wanted to know how to separate gravel or evaluate your gravel, it tells you how you can do that in the field, it gives you ideas, how to test it. Tells you what you're looking for. We've got a variety of different things. Like you said, it's simple techniques to determine your budget, a variety of different angles that we come from. It's well worth the look if you've got a little bit of time. And then technical assistance, as I say, David and myself, David Ora is our director. He was my physician prior to my hiring. And basically, we both go out and we do site visits, and we'll provide that technical assistance and that engineering guidance for your knowledge and education. So the real reason I'm here, the Pavement Management Summer Intern Program, the 2016, typically, all municipalities are welcome to participate, any level. Typically, the deadline is to sign up, a letter of commitment. Essentially, we need that by the end of February, beginning of March. And that way, we can, once we can set the number of municipalities, we can determine which students need to go where. I can, I do interviews at Cornell University for students. We encourage locals to get their own students, because there's a lot more ownership as far as students go, a lot more detail, a lot more concern about doing the right thing for the local municipality. Typically, we'll take up to 15 per year. This year, I've got 18. I try to help them all out if I can. So it's just how it works. We just got to try to help them go along. The idea behind the pavement management system that we have here is typically, when pavement deteriorates over a period of time, it's going to work its way down as time carries on. Over that first 75% of the time, that pavement's going to be pretty good shape. It's going to start showing cracks, it's going to start showing some distresses. Once you've reached that 75% point in the, in that graph, that's when you're, that's when the cracks start to get to the point where the moisture can actually get into the base. Once the moisture is in your base of the roads, it gets soft, it starts to cause it to flex. Your asphalt starts to break and crack, and that's when you start to get this severe failure you see down here at the bottom part down here. And it happens rather quickly, once that moisture's in there. So at this point, the idea behind the program is to basically maintain the roads in good shape. Fix them while they're still good, keep them in good shape, and then fix the other ones while you're working, as you're going along. Because it's going to be a lot cheaper. As you can see here, it's going to cost you $1 per unit versus, if you wait to the end down here, you're going to get, it's going to cost you four to five times that per unit. So the idea is to try to stretch those dollars, get your roads in good condition, and then kind of just work through there. Again, you've got this curve again, but your level of service. Typically, you want to try to keep your roads good. Ideally, very good would be nice, but you've got to pick a level of service that's acceptable within your municipality. And then the idea behind pavement maintenance is you just kind of do regular maintenance, and you keep it, keep it in good shape. It's kind of like painting your window sills and your fascia and different parts of your house. You don't wait till it rots. You paint it and cover it up and keep it looking good. Same premise behind this, is you keep it good and you maintain it in good condition. And again, you're talking about a dollar per unit. So you could spend three units over a period of time versus if you go to total failure, you can spend that five-plus unit. When it comes to reconstruction, rehabilitation, you're probably all aware that it's going to cost a lot of money to do that. Unfortunately, a lot of our roads need that, but over time, just trying to build them up. And the idea again is try to keep those good roads good, and then fix those poor ones as you go along. So some of the keys is basically, as the program goes through, the idea is basically you'll go through, the student will take, in this case, we're using students. If you'd like to buy the software, we have that available as well. But we use students, because it facilitates a lot of Highway Superintendents, because a lot of them don't have that manpower to do it. So we use the students as the, kind of the legs and the eyes of the Highway Department to get this done. So essentially, identify distresses that are in the field, determine their extent, their level of severity. And Sammy Colvin will talk about this coming up. Then you determine the cause, whether it is, majority of the time, it's either excess weight or a weak base. And the weak base could be from either poor construction, or moisture in the base, or moisture coming through the top. So it's a variety of different things, but evaluating what the cause is. Once you've identified what the cause is, you can actually fix it, and it'll actually last longer over a period of time. And then you schedule the treatment for the maximum life. And again, the software develops a priority numbers. It allows us to prioritize the roads based on the importance and the amount of traffic of the municipality. Each one is tailored a little bit different, because you have different demands and different needs. But then scheduling the repairs, the idea is again, try to keep those roads in good shape, and then fix them as you come up. And then, like you says, allow the correction. If you can fix those distresses or fix those problems, you're going to be a lot better off. So essentially, as I mentioned, this is available to anybody that wants to participate. The cost typically is, we charge $60 for a municipality to participate. You get the software, you get the training, and then you get support. If you have a student intern for the summer, I'll do two site visits to make sure they're on course, make sure they're not getting straight, make sure they're getting what you're expecting. And then, so we've, yeah, so I'll do that. Plus the software is kind of perpetual. If we do any updates on the software, we just give it to you. We're not out to make money. If you have any problems with the software, call us. We'll fix it for you, we'll make it better. The idea is that it doesn't cost you anything. The whole plan, premise behind our approach is that you'll develop an asset management plan where you can actually evaluate your roads, get a good picture of the whole network, and start to prioritize on the ones that ought to be done first. And then spend your money appropriately, and try to get the most out of that money. As I mentioned, it's available to all municipalities. You sign up in January, the training is at the end of May. And then typically, students will stay for 10 weeks, some stay for less, some stay for more. Depends on the municipality and how they want to work it. And you're not limited to one intern. Most municipalities do one intern, some do two. Depends on how much time they have available and what they want to get done. Some of the other things that interns have done, when they have two interns available, a lot of times they'll not only do the road inventory, but they'll go out and do culvert inventories, they'll go out and do sign inventories. That'll give the whole town a whole network of, a whole idea, a whole evaluation period of their infrastructure, the things that they're responsible for. So essentially, it's open to everyone. So this is my information. I'm the one who runs the program, so anybody who might have an interest in it. I do have some handouts if you're interested in it. Feel free to contact me at any time. And if you have any questions, by all means, let me know, and I'll do what I can to help you out. So at this point, I think what I'll do is I'll transition off to Sammy and Colvin. They look anxious back there.
I have a question. Has your program taken a look at alternatives, alternatives to road salt? Because there's increasing science that's saying that road salt is destroying our watershed, groundwater, you name it, cars, trees. And I really think that, just wondering if Cornell had done anything as far as affordable alternatives?
We haven't really worked with the water. They're doing a lot of studying on bitches, certain bitches, still doing cases. See how your decks of salt, and a variety of different types. They made their bitches, they made their decks, and you see how it's been better out there. And then the discharge of the, at the lakes themselves, and the red rainforeland, so, 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 so. So the training, I mean, I don't know what's. It's still in development, but they already work on it.
Yeah, because it's increasingly becoming more of a hot topic. I know there's, there's issues in the Osable River. I mean, that's because they're doing a study there. I mean, the science is really proving, not only does it rust out the vehicles and bridges and destroys roads, that it's also destroying the groundwater. It's becoming contaminated, and Mirror Lake, right? There's, yeah.
That's one of the newest programs, it's a lot of the dollars, you know, the access on the river. Putting all of this in ahead. Do we have any more questions?
Thank you. The intern program, is that funded by Cornell, or is that the municipality's responsibility?
The cost is $60, and then student intern, the cost is the municipality.
Is the municipality, okay. Thank you.
So again, that's the only cost, the labor of the student. Plus the $60, which is added coming through with the training.
And the labor fee is how much per hour?
Um, we're like, between 12, 15, varies depending on the municipality. So that varies from $54 to $66, I think.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Samuel Schelmanine.
And I'm Colvin Chapman.
This past summer, we participated in the Cornell Local Roads Program Pavement Management Internship.
So starting the process, we got hired by the town of Ticonderoga. Joe Giordano reached out to us at the Ticonderoga High School. We just graduated this year, and I had to go to college in the fall, which is part of the reason why Ticonderoga hired two interns, is because we only had about five, six weeks of summer. And so typically, it's a 10-week program for one intern, but we hired two interns for five weeks each.
At the end of May and early June, we went down to the Cornell campus in order to participate in a training session that one of the Ticonderoga Highway employees, Brett Hudson, was also in attendance, as well as Joe Giordano. So as for the goals of the Camp RS software, the goals being to generate a road database of all of the local roads in the municipality, as well as the road conditions in order to begin to create that database to pull from. In addition to that, it helps interpret and organize conditioned data, as well as objectively create a prioritized list of road repairs that the Highway Superintendent can then pull from in order to more objectively order repairs going forward.
And an end product in the future, we're hoping to have a more efficient kind of game plan to spend money in the future. So kind of a larger bang for your buck with your pavement money. So once we got back from Cornell, we got right to starting a database. And the first thing that we did was start kind of an inventory of all of the roads in time. The county records from the Department of Transportation were extremely helpful in that department. So that covered things like the road identification number. They were already broken up into sections that we used. But we went out and found things like the shoulder material. Yeah, and the traffic and importance was something we also put in. Those are values rated from one to five that we established just objectively from looking at the road sections. And that helps with the priority values that the software outputs. So a road with much more traffic would receive a five, and would typically be repaired before a road section with less traffic or less importance to the town in general, given that it was in a similar data range or condition range.
So as an example, we're going to walk you through what we did in order to begin the database and start to categorize one specific section of road. And for that, we picked Montcom Street in Ticonderoga. It's a very well-known road. In our municipality, it's the, it's main street essentially. And this one is right by Bicentennial Park and the waterfall. I'm not sure if you know where that is. But it'll stretch from Overlook Drive to Cannonball Path.
This is an example of the inputting screen, kind of logging the road into the system that I was talking about earlier. You start with, a lot of the top stuff was given by the county sheets that we were using. But towards the end, you can see the traffic importance, a notes column. We typically did notes later on when we exported it into an Excel spreadsheet. You can be more creative with the format. But that's the inputting.
Going forward from that, this is one of the condition surveys that we would take out for each road section. We printed them off in order to evaluate them onsite. And going into that, there's different distress types that we would be looking for, typically dealing with the surface, but as well as drainage of the road as well. So this right here is some of the road conditions of Montcom Street as an example. These were, these pictures are updated as of yesterday. Longitudinal cracking all the way on the left can be seen. There's some more towards the front of the photograph. There's, there's not too much in the left-hand lane, and not too much over the rest of the stretch of the road. So that's why it will be categorized as low extent. All of these stresses are categorized by extent, as well as severity of the cracks. You can see that the cracks aren't too severe, they're fairly small, not too deep. And that's why that was categorized as a low. However, if untreated, longitudinal cracking may progress to alligator cracking, as you can see in the center, about halfway up the photograph. There were only a few spots on the road in which you could see alligator cracking. However, the pieces were still contained within the sidewalk. Alligator cracking is where cracking, cracking occurs in a scale-like faction.
It, the cracks kind of close off into chunks and isolates chunks. And later on, if it gets to a more severe state, the cracks are wide enough. We usually gauge severity by crack width. And later on, severe alligator cracking, usually chunks are falling out. But we cover a variety of distresses. You can see on the sheet, there are about eight. With, including this, there is rutting, bleeding, roughness category that takes into account just basically the smoothness, which is what the general public will see of the bumps going over the road. But those are, for the most part, all of the things we log down when we're, when we're taking data. taking data in the field.
This right here is the collect survey data window within the Camp RS software, which is the software that we, we were using throughout our internship. As you can see, it's, it's very, very easy to deal with, you simply transfer any of the, the condition, distress data that, that you logged in the field down, and it'll help generate that database.
So after you input the condition data from the window that you saw before, it spits out a repair category, and in this instance, it recommends patching, probably because of the, the edge cracking and the alligator cracking, the cracks are more extensive, so it would probably be fairly unsafe and ineffective to you crack ceiling, which would be a crack repair category in an earlier stage. So it, it recommends patching, and from patching, under the patching category, you can pick a repair option, which is a more specific one, and so we decided to recommend, later on, the superintendent will see this and not, not take it as a, something that they'd need to do, but obviously take it with a grain of salt and use their own information and, and pick a repair that would make more sense, taking into account things that the software can't actually take, consider.
And going from that, the repair options that, that are given also have a repair cost estimated associated with it. Given proper records, the software can actually be used to go in and make a cost estimate that is unique to each municipality, so it helps customize the software to, to each town.
This is an example of an exported spreadsheet, so from, from the software database in Camp RS, you can export it and get an Excel sheet, and as I mentioned earlier, we have a few notes columns, you can be a little more creative in Excel, you can create more extensive note columns. All the way on the right, Sam and I did kind of an inventory of sidewalks at the same time we were looking at the pavement sections, and we added an attention needed column as well, so when Sal Barnett, the superintendent, is looking down this, he can, he can look and, and see if the sidewalk needs attention, or if, if the road needs something that's urgent. And going forward, I'm not sure if you can hear me if I walk over here, but this is another column that the software puts out, it's called, it's a priority value, and so the, the theory behind that is each road that is input into the software, the, the software calculates a number, a priority number, if you will, and if you compare that number to other numbers, other road numbers in the section, then you can order them based off of that value, and so the, the road with the, the needed, the highest priority value would get boosted to the top of the list, and you can see that that would generally want to be repaired first. And going over, we have one called Condition, PCI, the, the condition actually stands for Priority Condition Index, I believe, and that's kind of the same idea with priority, all means with, with condition, so each, each road gets a number from something like zero to 94, 94 being the best road, and here you can see that condition and priority are not, not necessarily the best link, so if you repair the worst road first, it's actually a very inefficient way to spend your money, but if you maintain the roads to last longer, it's a much more efficient way. So, so the priority is, in summary, the priority is what order the software recommends to do the repairs, and the condition is an overall state of how bad the roads are generated.
Moving from the spreadsheet, we were able to construct a, a table of the road, overall road conditions in our local municipality, that to show a bit of an overall breakdown according to the percentage of roads and the length in miles that we have in, in Ticonderoga, based on that, that PCI.
Going forward over time, we will hopefully see more roads, our good roads stay in the, in the good, very good range, and we'll be repairing more of our poor roads gradually over time, so those will be much more costly, but we should have funding for, for regular maintenance to keep our good roads good, which is very efficient, and a few more expensive security repairs to get them into this cycle of keeping our good roads good.
So finally, this is, this is a summary of some of the objectives through, through the Cornell Asset Management Program for, for roads and streets. We, we really wanted to see the big picture and give a very objective view on, on what, what roads need fixing in, in our municipality.
So the software takes every road section into account, so if the superintendent wanted to do crack repairs or crack sealing, the software would have a log of every section in, in your town that, that the, the town would be responsible for, and then you could see, it would flag every road section that crack repairs might benefit in, and so it's a good way to take every section into account and not accidentally ignore one that's not usually in your, your realm of focus.
Next would be to develop a, a long-term game plan, this, this process of bringing all road qualities in the municipality up from possibly poor to very poor, acceptable, a wide range, all the way up to, to good and very good. It may take five, 10, 15 years. So what this program does is it helps prioritize all of the repairs needed in municipality, and it provides an order that the highway superintendent can, can then go forth and repair, repair the roads in. Now, given that, that this database was generated this year, it may be necessary, it will be necessary in two or three years to go back out and resurvey in order to combat any changing conditions in the road.
And the next one is build from the bottom up, and that's a recommendation when we are talking to our town board in Ticonderoga. Not only should we look down and look at the base when we're redoing the roads, if we have a, a poor base, a poorly constructed base, the, the, any money that you put into the surface will deteriorate rapidly and your investment will essentially be lost. And at the same time, if you have any utilities, you should cross-reference with the water department and sewer department, and if they need to do work, do that at the same time that you're doing the road, that way in the future, if you spend money redoing a surface, you don't dig it up and lose your investment that way, as, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to make a good patch when you're, when you're redoing a road that you just did, because you, you can't compact the patch all the way down if there's pipes in there, and so it's usually a very good idea to do it all at the same time and, and have a long-lasting investment.
Next up would be to, would be one of the, the main, main points of the Camp, Camp RS, would be to keep the good roads good. This is giving preventative maintenance to the roads that can, can be saved while slowly bringing up the, the poor roads to, to the same level.
And doing the right repair at the right time will hopefully maximize the efficiency of your municipality.
Finally, this, this will help improve communication among municipal officials, this spreadsheet, that the final output can be shared between departments in the municipality to help coordinate those efforts for the repairs, like Colvin was saying.
And that concludes our presentation on the Camp RS process.
We thank you very much for the opportunity to, to participate in this internship, and we hope that it benefits Ticonderoga for, for years to come.
And we welcome any questions. Thank you.
And just make one mention, both Sam and Colvin are, have just graduated high school, they're both entering off into college next year to study engineering, and when you look at this program, I think one of the things to me is the value added. Jim had mentioned about the cost of the program, so just a simple cost-benefit analysis, it's for, for which you're paying for this, you're getting quite a bet out, the interns are getting the experience, obviously this is something that typically is given to software or freshman sophomore-level engineering students, but because of Sam and Colvin's caliber, they were certainly adept at, at taking this on. The municipality has the resource of being able to use this to have good conversation between the highway department and the town board and making good, intelligent decisions with, with the resources that they have, and certainly the, not least of which is the residents in terms of having, you know, the best use of their money spent towards the infrastructure in town, so, thank you.
Gentlemen, you're going off to college.
Yes, sir.
Where are you going?
I'm going to Owen College of Engineering, which is a very small engineering school just outside of Boston. I'm headed to Rochester Institute of Technology in just about a week now to study engineering.
Congratulations and wish you the best of luck, you've done a great job at Ticonderoga.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, moving on, Veterans Office, Mr. Mary Who.
We have no report this morning, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I had made a request last October to have the existing department fee resolution amended to include the schedule that's attached. This comes directly from the New York State Regulation. We're doing things now that, that we weren't doing when the initial regulation was adopted, and this would include trolley scales, or some higher-capacity scales that, again, we get the same price for them as we get for a dolly scale. And this will cover the whole gamut, I mean, anything were to change in the future, it would be covered under this schedule.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Miga, discussion. All a favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Okay, that's all we got, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The Board of Elections wants to report that there will be no need for a primary election in September on the 13th, so the next election will be the general election on November 8th.
Any questions for Board of Elections?
If you do anything about candidates.
All right, thank you very much. District Attorney. Any questions for the District Attorney today? Thank you.
Good morning. I have a series of resolutions I need, as you know, we're trying to wrap up the radio project, and we prioritize our projects, but in saying that, I'm going to need some resolutions and some expenditures so we can finish the project and make it whole. In saying that, I, I know that Dan had mentioned there was 180,000 in the radio project fund, he was correct in that he was looking at one line item, but the total of, of all the budget revenue was around a million dollars. So we still have that, that million dollars in the project, we're below budget, and so in saying that, we need to, to follow through with some things. One is, we received a payment of 216,708 dollars from NISEC, we need to move that to, from account H30214 to account 5422, and I need a resolution to do that, to budget amendment.
All right, Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Miga, discussion. All a favor?
Aye.
Foes?
Presently, we are, we have been running since May without a maintenance contract on our Motorola LMR radio system. We received a quote back in June, and I believe it was, it's around 179,000, I think it's in your packet, 179,823 and 36 cents. What I was doing was I was working with the state police, they had proposed a combined maintenance contract where we merged both of our contracts together, as a single Motorola contract for their consoles and our consoles and the LMR, but in, in saying that, I waited, waited, and it, it just didn't evolve, and I don't want to operate without a, a maintenance contract. What we were going to do is offset that cost, that 180,000, with the 750,000 that we are owed by the state police, we're doing the same thing with the microwave, but again, I don't think we can afford to wait, it just doesn't seem to be moving off-center, so I would like to institute this maintenance contract, probably take a couple months to, to do it, and by that time, it'll be probably September, October, but I'd like a resolution to accept it and enter into this contract, maintenance contract with Motorola, it is on state contract.
Do you have a motion?
Can you, this comes out of the radio fund?
Mr. Miga, second. Mr. Moore, discussion. How long is the contract for?
A year.
Mr. Moore.
We just took in 216,700 dollars as a revenue, now we're paying this one out. What does that leave us in the radio contract, the radio funds that we have?
Well, 260,000 from about 1.1 million.
1.1 million. Okay, so we still got quite a bit of money in there.
Mr. Stotfield, yes. But this is an O and M expenditure, this isn't a capital expenditure, so I mean, this is going to be a yearly item in the budget.
That is correct.
So, this got nothing to do with money we borrow, because this doesn't go away.
No, but it's an appropriate cost to pay out of there, I mean, we're allowed to pay it out of there.
Yeah, but why would you want to finance an operation of maintenance? I mean, so my point is, you mentioned something about state police revenues that are, are we using that revenue to offset this expenditure in the, in the fiscal yearly budget?
That may come to pass, Tom, but right now, the actual place we were going to get that money from was the NISEC payment that we're trying, we just transferred.
Okay, so I mean, is that something that's there continuously? My question is down the road, how do we finance this huge maintenance expense?
We knew all along that we were going to have to cover the maintenance costs of this.
But is there any revenue anticipated to cover?
Not after this year, no. It will become a budget item as we move forward.
So that's about another one percent and a half percent?
But it's not something we didn't know, we knew all along we were going to have to have a maintenance contract, it's like every software, I mean, every program.
I know, but it was my understanding that the revenue that we were going to be taking in from the state police, that is, that'll offset this yearly cost.
It, it could if they agreed to it. They are, they're presently paying for our microwave maintenance out of that cost, and what we proposed was doing the same with the LMR, but it just didn't happen this year.
It's so hard, I mean, I tell you, it's so hard to get money from the state, I mean, and state police have the same issue, and they can't give us, you know, it's like anything else, in your towns as well, you wait for the state to give you money, that's what we're waiting for. The state police have a bill, the intent is that when we get all done, and the, and the radio project is finished, any money that's left over would be allocated back to the general fund. Now, you could take this money directly from the general fund now if you wanted to, but my point is you would take it from the project money now, if there's any money left over when we're closed out, we'll go back to the general fund with that.
I understand that, for what we have right now, for, but I'm saying down the road, this is going to be, I mean, you can't.
This'll be an ongoing maintenance cost over every year that we have the system.
So when you take the maintenance costs, then you take the capital portion, debt service, expensive system.
It is, yeah. Is that one year's? One-year contract? This is one year's worth of maintenance, is what it is. Is there savings if we sign a long, longer-term contract? No.
No, no, no.
That's their standard maintenance fee.
We reduced the initial cost, it was 260,000 was the original bid, and we told them it was unacceptable, if we reduced it down to what we feel is a minimum service.
What's it cover? Give me an example of what it covers.
A cost?
Yeah.
A failure of a core, of the microwave core, or, not the, not the microwave, but the LMR core, or a failure of a GTI transmitter, which we just had, which I'm going to bring up next, things like that.
In other words, that 100, I guess the question I'm trying to ask, with maintenance agreements are great moneymakers for companies. If you, and I understand it's a roll of the dice, but if you paid, if you had a situation where you had to pay it out of pocket, are you, would you reach 180,000 dollars a year in a brand-new system?
You could very easily.
Yeah, easily.
Unless, unless a- In this agreement, this contract, there's a 25,000 dollar bank. That 25,000 stays there. It's a parts bank. It's going to remain there the next year, and the next year unless you use it by having to replace failed components.
Does this also include preventive maintenance on the systems?
Yes. Yes, it does. And the problem, Tom, with not having a contract is, you don't have a contract, you have a major system failure. You call up Motorola, and they won't talk to you, or they're going to take four or five days to get back to you. That's, we call escalation phase. If we have a contract, we call them, they have to respond immediately.
Yeah, they get, within...
If you don't have a contract...
They have a timeframe in which they have to respond. This is, this is too critical to call without a maintenance contract.
I agree. I'm just concerned about the, how are we going to pay for it?
I know. Believe me, I am too.
Any other discussion? Mr. Mary Who?
Don mentioned an amount of money that we were anticipating from the state. Is that just for one year, or does that go back about four years?
No, that's for the project. The 750,000 was actually, most of that was generated out of what we determined at the end were soft costs. Jackie Murray, the attorney that had writing those leases, the language originally contained a reference to what would essentially be soft costs at the end of the project, which none of us could anticipate to begin with, these kinds of things, the maintenance costs, those things like that. So at the end, there was a calculation done. The soft costs were attributed to all of the players, including NISEC. When NISEC's 216 is a soft cost payment, right?
I believe so, yes.
So the 216 that NISEC has paid us is a soft cost calculation. That was their share. The 750,000 is a soft cost calculation based upon what the state police saw.
Mr. Monty?
I guess a couple of questions, Don. The service agreement includes, someone comes in, they commit it for them coming in, determining what's wrong, advising us, and then the parts are included, or are the parts separate for any failure?
We have a spare parts inventory.
Of only 25,000?
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, we also, we also have spare parts stored in our facility. What we call critical spare parts. So hopefully, we'd have the right parts. But in saying that, the 25,000, yes, that's us.
Hopefully, but all we got is 25,000 in that whole contract. My next question is, do we have an agreement in writing with the state police that they were going to?
Yeah.
With the microwave, yes.
For the maintenance on the microwave, but the soft costs?
Just the microwave, presently.
But they're also in contract for the soft costs?
Yes.
Jackie Murray developed this soft cost contract, which went out to all the parties, and all the parties signed it, and all the parties agreed to what was supposed to be paid. So yes, they owe us the 750,000. When we'll get it from the state, I don't know. The state police themselves can't tell you that.
They are, however, paying for the contract with Alcatel-Lucent to maintain the microwave. And that cost is being deducted from the 750 they owe us.
That's what we were really looking to do on this maintenance charge. We wanted to have the state police absorb that cost in that, so they didn't have to cash to us at 750. They would be covering our maintenance costs. We can't wait any longer. We can't get an agreement, so we can't wait.
Mr. Moore?
Well, talking about waiting for the state, we've had projects, we've got grants for them, we've waited eight to 10 years to get them closed out, closed out, to get our money. So you're right, Dan. Waiting for the state, you just can't wait, you've got to pay for it. But I guess my more important question is, we're talking about the cost of this system and the maintenance of it and everything. I guess the real question is, before we started this radio system update, what was the coverage of SS County for radio service in SS County? 40%? 50%?
Between 50 and 60, depending on where you were.
So 40 to 50% of SS County did not have radio service coverage. What are we going to have when we get done? 100%?
Well, 99, 98%.
That's pretty good. So we did this because we had to do it. We had no choice. If our constituents wanted radio coverage, when there was a time there was a fire or an ambulance call, we didn't have any coverage. So we had to do it. And that cost of doing business, that's the cost.
Donnie, in this service contract, are any of the mobiles covered?
No.
I didn't think so.
Well, and in saying that, Supervisor Preston, what I've done is, I have kept around 10 spares with the mobiles. And what we would do is, if a mobile fails in one of the fire units or police or whatever, we will just swap them out and then have the oven set back for repair. It's not cost-effective to try to include those in it.
So if they're swapped out, who's going to pay for it?
Well, we own the radio, so we'd simply swap it out. There would be no cost to the department.
Okay, thank you. Just to, just for the new supervisors, in terms of this, I know it's been, it's been an ongoing, long project. But the original radio project that was approved and was funded by the bond resolution was for 10 million dollars. That's the amount that we were given to work with. What ultimately turned out was a much larger system. It was a full redundant system that included the state police and NISEC. The cost of the system was over 17 million. Our cost remained under the 10 million. We never spent more than the 10 million. The rest of it came from state police, and from New York State Electric and Gas as partners within this. So I think we've stretched our money pretty well. I think it's a fairly successful project. And I just, you know, I think we lose sight of that sometimes, that we were limited to 10 million dollars for a system that we decided was going to be twice as big as what we talked about.
And I, and I agree. And I supported the system. My concern is the ongoing cost down the road. And to be very frank, I've had this discussion with board supervisors, the county attorney numerous times, about the creation of a county-wide district, which would cut that cost by more than half if all those tax-exempt properties that are benefiting from this, were also paying a portion of it. And I don't know why we don't explore that, or why we don't move on.
I thought we did talk to, didn't we, didn't somebody, I don't know if it was Randy or Betty about...
If we can spend months...
I mean, we can't do it the way, my understanding is, we can't do it the way it's currently set up, that it would require some kind of permission from the state in order to set up that district.
Then we need to ask for that. I've had this discussion with Betty Little. I mean, we can spend months about tying dogs up, but here's something that's, I mean, we, we need to do something with this. Because this cost is just going to continue to grow. And as we all know, Dan, how much exempt properties out there in this county?
It's over 2 billion.
2 billion. That paid nothing towards any of these capital expenditures, but yet received the benefit.
Are you talking about a county emergency services district?
A district where these costs are shared? Benefit district, because everybody receives the benefit, but there's many out there that don't pay for it.
That's kind of good, Steve.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Carries?
Okay, the second on my list, or third actually, is up on Gore Mountain, we had a GTI failure, which is one of the Land Mobile radio base units that's on the mountaintop. There are 24 of these radios. Unfortunately, we were down for over a week with EMS radio in that section of the county, and we had to have all the EMS agencies switch onto the fire band because we didn't have a spare. That is one of the real important parts that we didn't initially put in the spare parts list because we were trying to keep costs down. But I'd like to purchase one out of the radio fund. It's a 14,980 dollars for a purchase of the GTI 8,000 spare. And I'd like to buy that spare and have it on hand. There's 24 radios, and surely one of them can give up.
Moved by Mr. Moore. Second by Mr. Giordano, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Carries?
Okay, and I also ask for a resolution to apply for and accept the 2016, 2017 Public Safety Answering Point Operations Grants, a grant that's given every year. We're not sure about the amount that's going to be awarded, but we anticipate it to be around 166,000. And that is to operate our dispatch center, that is what paid for our new CAT upgrade at no cost to the taxpayers locally.
Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Miga, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Carries?
Okay, I have another resolution. If you remember, a while back, some of the new supervisors may not have been part of that discussion, but we talked about the power issue on the transmitter site at Anger Hill, that the generator on Anger Hill, combined with the FM stations that exist there, when they switch and they oscillate back and forth, cause a bad sine wave, which is picked up by our UPS system and causes the system, when we fail, we lose utility, we go to generator, it will not switch to generator, and it will not switch back on to utility. So it runs until the batteries die, about seven hours, and we lose the site. The solution we initially looked at was installing a new generator, putting a pad in, tanks, which, you know, we were talking 60, 70,000 dollars. We have come up with another simpler solution, which is to install a 48-volt power supply. Now, the microwave and the LMR both function off 48 volts DC. We actually have to invert the voltage down to DC to power those radios. And we are proposing putting a 48-volt power supply in with a small charger, which wouldn't care about the dirty power off the generator or the utility, it'll switch to one or the other. And it's a lot cheaper than putting a generator in. The cost would probably be around 20,000, but I'm guessing again, until they engineer it. So I'm asking that we get AES or someone to engineer the plan, and then I'll come back and ask about the cost. You know, we'll propose, we'll tell you what it's going to cost. So really, I'm asking, I guess, the higher, the engineering services to install a 48-volt and install a 48-volt power supply.
Motion? Mr. Whitson, second. Mr. Moore, discussion? Is AES the kind of right agency for doing something?
They're under contract with the county, but I don't know. I think an electrician could actually engineer it.
Do we want to bid for this?
I don't think it's a big, I think it's not a very detailed study to figure out how to do it. I don't think it would take long, I don't think it'd be very expensive. If we could use AES, that would be good.
Mr. Sova?
Donnie, so the issue is, when you have an outage, the generator picks it up, there's a converter, converts it to DC, and when line power comes back on, the generator goes down?
Yes.
But it doesn't pick it back up to charge the battery?
No, it won't switch it back, no.
So who designed that system for us? We're a real rocket science...
Motorola.
Motorola. The same ones that were going to pay 180,000 dollars a year, of course they want a maintenance contract, we're calling them all the time.
To be fair, to be fair, the power is dirty. The generator is putting out dirty power because of the switching, there's heavy loads switching back and forth. And basically, they said, well, you know what? That's your problem, because anything else works fine. And not Motorola, but the landowner that provides the power said, you know, if you want to fix that, you put your own generator in. We gave you power, you know, and so they really didn't want to go there as far as putting a new generator in or a filter system.
Did we, we put a generator in, or we didn't have it?
No.
Okay. Right, it's the owner's generator, it's not...
The owner's...
I misunderstood.
No, we could go out and spend the money for a new generator, but that's 60, 70,000 dollars. If this cheaper option would work, it makes sense to do that. I have the authority to approve any expenditure less than 5,000 or less. I think in this case, if it's less than that, I'll approve it. If it's more, if we think it's going to be more than that, we'll go out to bid.
Mr. Monty?
Do we, do we share that unit with any other group using that?
The generator or the radio system?
The radio system, there.
No, that's our, that's our Land Mobile radio and microwave. That's about that same...
That's all ours?
Yeah, well, the microwave is shared.
Right.
But the, yeah.
With everyone else?
Mr. Preston?
I'm in favor of taking care of this. I'm not in favor of AES, there's just been too many problems. And I've decided, in my opinion, we need to cut our ties there and move forward.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Okay, thank you.
Okay, as you know, the generator issues we've had at the Public Safety Building, our backup generator has carried us 20, 30 times. It does power the 911 center beautifully. But one of the issues is, the data room number 117, the air conditioning stops working there. The heat that's generated within that room becomes a problem. In the past, we have opened up all the doors, the outside of the building, and put big fans in to blow it through. There are two Lieber secondary systems, or air conditioning systems, that are in there that I know can be tied into the 175 911 backup generator. And I think it'd be an actual pull of some wire into another panel. But I would like, again, to get permission to move forward with that. The cost, I think, would be below 5,000, but again, I'm guessing. But I'd like permission to go ahead and have that looked at by an engineer, an electrical engineer, and have him design the fix to power those Lieber air conditioning units in that data center with a backup generator when we lose power. Hopefully, the jail generator will work every time, and we won't have to worry about that again. But again, I have to make sure that our center does not go down. In high temperatures in that data room, the LMR and the microwave, they have systems that say, hey, I'm getting too hot, I'm going to shut off, so...
Moved? Mr. Arrington? Second by Mr. Moore, discussion?
And again, not to beat a dead horse, this all goes back to design. Why would you design a system where you know air conditioning is critical in a room like that and not have that circuit on the generator? I don't get it. I mean...
That's, that goes back to the original...
I understand, but there's no accountability.
Well, they're gone, unfortunately.
I know they're gone, but I'm just saying, and then we end up down the road eating the cost. And Mr. Preston, back on his question on AES, which is a good point, how do we, I mean, they have a contract with us. How do they get that contract?
They bid it each year.
Does anybody else ever bid?
Yeah, we've got, we actually haven't, we went out the contract for the architectural part of that. We have a different name to recommend for you. We have not done it so with the engineering. But here's the problem, okay? And I run into this problem a lot. I had one supervisor just tell me, and the second one agreed, that I shouldn't use AES for this. I have no board resolution telling me that, but I have a contract with AES for doing this work. So am I not using them because one person told me that? Or am I not using it because this board voted, told me not to?
Oh, I think these are, you need an electrical engineer.
Yeah.
And we have one on contract, but it happens to be AES.
So if you don't want me to use them, please pass a resolution telling me not to use them.
Mr. Monty?
Dan, just being though, can you enlighten me, was it a bid process that...
Yeah, we do yearly bids for engineering, electrical engineering, regular engineering, architectural, and we do the...
And they got the bid for a year.
We usually sign into three-year contracts, that's what we typically do with these.
What year are we in with them now?
I think, we went just one back out on the street for the architectural portion, and we have a new name to recommend for that. The engineering, I don't know, I'd have to ask Linda where we are on that one.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Preston?
So my question is, and we might have to get Chris and Jim up here, is where do we stand on the problem with the generator that, for the Public Safety Building, if that's been repaired, does that power these units? And do we know if that's repaired?
Yes, if the large generator, the 1.2 megawatt generator runs, it will power the air conditioning.
Yeah. Okay, so it seems like we beat the answer to...
So we're back to that, yeah, we're right back to that same problem of the, but again, the last thing we looked at was, we had a leg of that three-phase system coming from NISEC, still providing power, which was causing the switchover problem. power, which was causing the switch over problem.
Now, I don't know where they are, Jim probably can tell us better, or Chris.
I was more looking at a timeframe.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that. Can I hear what you just said, because that's something we called them out on two years ago?
Absolutely.
So they had one leg that was still powering up.
Yeah.
So why aren't they taking any liability for this after the-
I think you need to talk to Jim and Chris.
I mean, I called them out on that, and that's on the record, because that's usually what happens with a three-phase system.
I know.
Mr. Garo, would you like to come forward, or Mr. Dugan to address this? Pardon?
Yeah. By the way, my first meeting went a lot better, because I won here.
I know, I know parts, I just accepted a meeting with NISEC next week, and me and Jim are going to attend, Bob LaValle's going to attend, and there's, and we're going to discuss the issue that was brought forward.
Can I attend that, Bill?
Sure, sure. We'll send you an email.
Let me know when it is. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Garo, Mr. Dugan?
Well, could, could we wait till the outcome of that meeting before we spend that money? Does that make logical sense?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Do you move to table this?
We don't need to table, I just, we don't take any action on it until we find out.
All right, so the mover and the second, is that all right? Okay, thank you.
Just let me, I want to clarify the reason why I want to attend that meeting, because the day that we spent at the jail, NISEC was there, okay? We asked them to shut down, the guy from Square D was there, and they denied that they still had voltage coming through one leg and some of the, which obviously, if that generator's sensing that, a lot of times, they won't, they won't pick the load up. And they denied it time after time after time.
The sensitivity of the new relays that were installed shows that, that it's still happening at times, and that's what the, that's what the meeting is about. We had no way to prove it with, with all the technology that was there before.
You could prove it with a volt meter.
Well.
I mean, seriously, that was-
You're an electrician, Tom, you-
No, but I'm saying, so I just, you know, they just would not listen. So I mean, they got some ownership in this.
Thank you.
Trying to speed things up. Uh, we, we have a, a resolution for a budget amendment to amend the communications budget, 30204, in the amount of 166,248 dollars, to add it to this year's 2015-16 PSAP budget, the PSAP operations grant. So it was a grant, we applied for last year, we finally were awarded it, but it was too late to put it into the budget. We simply want to put it into the budget for this year so we can spend it.
Move by Mr. Preston, second. Mr. Moore, thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pros?
And the last thing, I just want to talk about it, is, is another, is another issue that we have with the, with the dispatch center, and it's called diverse routing. So right now, we, we had an incident last winter where Verizon was working on the fiber lines coming out of the Lewis, or excuse me, the E-Town central office here, up to our dispatch center, and they broke them. And it was really cold, that's one of the reasons they broke. We lost our 911 trucks. So most PSAPs need diverse routing, which is, we are now asking Verizon what it would cost, and the state police are very much into this, what it would cost to run another set of trunk lines to the office in Chesterfield, the central office there. So if someone hit a pole here, severed something, we still have half of our truck lines. So that, I don't know the cost of that. I've talked to Dan about it over time, but before the project monies are taken, I'd really like to finish that, so that we have diverse routing. So I'm, I'm just letting the board know, when I talk about it again, you know, you'll know what I'm, what I'm at.
Who's going to engineer it?
Verizon. Verizon is engineering it. They have an engineering group that is working on it.
Anything else for Mr. Jaques?
Yes.
Mr. Scotts-Brown.
Just, I guess it's related to the radio system somewhat, and I don't think we need an engineer. Belfry, a lot of people walk up Belfry to go to the fire tower and so on, but there's really no parking there. Can that gate be moved to where the road starts, where you could use that bottom area bounty for parking?
I will inquire if that is possible. That's our right of way. We probably could move the gate.
I'm, you know, I'm not saying eliminate the gate, because they walk up anyway, but that whole bottom section, you could, you know, you could probably park five, six cars in there. And they're parking right on a blind hill there on the Si Asu, now, coming up both ways, you know, you're just looking.
Just so you know, in the next week or two, Belfry's tower's being taken down. So that 190-foot old tower is being taken down by Prescott Towers. They have also already removed the one at Wells Hall, they took it down last week. Also, the tree trimming on Terry Mountain has been going pretty well, with a few bumps, but we're about halfway on that job as well.
Mr. Moore?
Talking about before we close out the radio project, this $10 million project ended up being 7 million, 17 million dollars. How many sites do we have now that we have to take care of? How many sites do we have?
Totally, there are 17 sites, but we take care of 11 of them.
11 of them, that's what I'm-
We either, we're involved in 11 of them.
We say we take care of them, like the roads and things going up.
No, we take care of Belfry and Terry Mountain, the roads.
So our DPW department only has two to take care of?
Unless I'm forgetting one, yes.
Okay, because what I'm thinking is, if we have any money left over, because I'm talking to Jim and Chris quite frequently, and they get a call, they need to go do this, they need to go do that, but they don't get any money, extra money in their budget. So by stretching them out, doing all this maintenance and everything, just like the fairgrounds and the fish hatchery and everything else, I think we ought to take some of that money and put it aside to help, like a, like a capital fund, to help them take care of their budget, just a food for thought in the future, okay?
Anything else for emergency services today? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for listening to me for so long.
Emergency medical services.
I didn't realize, and so I looked at the agenda today, that I'm actually an item on the agenda, so I will come with a report from this point forward. Just a really quick update, the committee meets monthly, if not more often. We have a contract in place, we have our kickoff meeting, I think it's in two weeks. Excuse me, where the agencies start to survey, so within a couple of months, anyway, we should be well into the survey, and we'll start giving you guys some reports back. Pretty exciting, not had any significant block back that I know about, anyway, you guys may have heard something locally, but I haven't heard anything from the EMS providers. Very proud and pretty excited to be moving forward on this. Any questions for me?
Questions for emergency services, emergency medical services. Mr. Mayor?
The survey, who participated in that?
It hasn't started yet. The EMS providers will get a notification, they mostly know that already, that the survey's going to happen. CGR is the company that we hired, the contract's just been signed, I think, right, by the county, so, but all the agencies will know about it. The kickoff meeting will go to the chief EMS person, and probably the chief fire officer if they're a joint agency. If you want to be in the know, I can certainly send it, I can send it to the supervisors too, the kickoff meeting, that'd be probably a great idea. And then what happens, so what happens, that's just a phone call, and then the week after, I think it is the 29th, 29th and 30th, are the first round of surveys. So where I'll be interviewing first, I think it's emergency managers, then later on, there'll be the law enforcements, there's another group I'm forgetting, and then I'll start interviewing the agencies. So I'm going to start locally here first, so that I can get right to Lewis, and then expand out from there. I think the second day, the 30th, or the first day in September, there'll be two more days in September, then I'll start doing the southern part of the county.
Any other questions for emergency medical services? Sheriff's office, report. Provation? Any questions for probation? Public defender, Brandon Patel is on active duty this week, does have a, a motion for a grant, to accept a grant of 191,496 dollars over three years.
Yeah, this was the grant we anticipated, it was in the budget, it is, has been used to offset salaries and those kinds of things within the department, it pays for an additional position. It is part of the state's commitment to fund public defenders offices, so we knew this was coming, we just need the budget resolution to do it.
Move it. Move by Mr. Preston, go to second. Mr. Miga, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pros? Thank you. Any further business to come before public safety? Turn.